Okay, everybody's here on the telephone at our line, I guess. Yeah. I guess it's seven. I guess we'll call the meeting to order for this Board of Supervisors work session meeting of April the 13th, 2020, King William County Remote Locations. Ms. Lawrence, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber? Mr. Garber?
He looks like he's dropped.
Yeah, I didn't see him earlier.
He was on. He's dropped. He's coming back in. It's 769-0030 is his.
Mr. Garber, are you here?
Yes, I am. I was, I just redialled the number.
All right. Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here. Okay, next item we have on the agenda is review and adoption of the meeting agenda.
Make a motion, we adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Chair, well, after we get that, I do have a statement to make. On item 4B, that is not an actual appointment, if I remember right. Ask Travis. It was one we just did. I don't, I don't care if you do it, I'm just saying, it's not an appointment by the board. We, we did one for Arts Alive, but it's not one that's set up by the, ever how you normally do it for the commission or whatever.
Okay.
So I think Bill's point was that it's not codified that we have to have a representative, we've just traditionally sent one.
That's the word.
Okay. And also, this is the amended budget. Everybody did get the amended budget that has the closed session on it?
I do.
Okay. And we did have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Lawrence, could you call roll?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber? Mr. Garber?
Hi. Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi. Okay, next item we have is work session matters for a fire and EMS update by interim chief Laura Nunneling.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right, short, sweet, and to the point. A quick update for what's going on with our three higher positions. We interviewed one firefighter, excuse me, two firefighters. This past week, we have offered one a job, and we are still doing interviews and advertising for that position, which obviously the state of coronavirus, things are a little slow right now. Talk about the coronavirus, we're reporting everything to the state for the state of emergency that is being done. It's being done on a daily basis. Up until this week, we had conference calls three times a week with VDEM, and I have a weekly conference call with the Health Department. We are part of the Region One Task Force area, so I get constant updates on that. We have a weekly update with that. As far as keeping our numbers, we're tracking everything for reimbursement. We're working with the Sheriff's Office and with the dispatchers who've been absolutely amazing and making sure that they're asking the right questions to protect everyone and our employees and our citizens. The biggest problem that we have right now and that we're facing is on the 6th of this month, Hanover County pulled all their part-time people from doing any type of volunteering or part-time work, which puts a very hard hit on us. We only have six full-time people as we sit right now, and that took us down to, that was 30% of our workload that left. They will be able to turn to work, obviously, once this is all over, but that's, we rely heavy on our part-time to make our staffing levels. I have discussed it with both the county administration and with all of my staff. One of the big things is if we keep, if departments fall in suit and we keep losing part-time work, that's going to put a hurting on us and our ability to answer calls. One of the solutions is our six full-time employees will go to 48 hours on and 48 hours off, and we work it in a two-shift rotation with three people on it. That will be rough on them. They're aware of it, the silver lining is we have a lot of younger employees who don't have family, so, or animals, or can arrange for that, so that does help a lot. It's still going to be a rough one on them. We have all of our PPE, we have requested, we're constantly working with the state to bring all that in and make sure we get what we need. I have gone through and put some backup procedures in place, just in case we, as a department or the Sheriff's Office, does not have enough to protect us, we are working on getting a actual third line of what I can do to make sure that both our deputies and our fire and EMS are, are completely covered and working in a safe environment. One of our part-time employees was put on a quarantine because he was exposed. However, that part-time employee did not expose any of our people or work with our people, so he's on that 14-day quarantine and won't be working. Battalion Chief 1, 2, and 3, excuse me, 1, 2, and Lieutenant Caleb Wilson, who works for Hanover. Hanover has been gracious enough to extend us the offer to allow them to work in the administrative roles during this time, which is fantastic, because I am swamped with three times as much paperwork as I had before, and losing them would hurt. So I have reached out to their command staff, spoken with their assistant chief, and they have been amazing with that. The other thing that we're looking at, if we, the biggest problem is we get a 48 on, 48 off. If one of our crews were to be exposed, the issue there is how are we going to put a second crew in place? West Point, all of their members, if they start pulling volunteer in part-time, that will affect them. Also, Mango Hick has been affected staffing level-wise. I have reached out to Emergency Solutions Incorporated, which is one of the few spots around the area that allows for a short-term and long-term process of being hired. They are only emergency medicine, they do absolutely nothing in fire. The numbers are not pretty if we were to have to do that. An ALS crew of two people a day would cost us $2,100, and if we had to keep them for a month running 24-hour shifts, it would cost us over $60,000. So that is a place we don't want to go to. Let's hope that we stay on the track that we're on. But we need to be prepared for what could possibly happen. And we've been talking about that and staying in the loop and having plans the whole time. Our ambulance was put on hold for the fact that we could not travel down there to see it. We have made the decision that what we're going to do is we are going to do a Zoom like this of our final inspection. If we do not, we don't have any idea how long it will be before it gets up here, and we could be looking into the months of the fall before we get it. And then, once it's here, it's going to take another month to have all the radio systems put in. So we are setting up a Zoom, and we're going to go that way and make sure that we protect ourselves as a county to get all the information that we need to get and that we are under warranty with anything else that will be fixed and hopefully arrange it, so if we need anything, EES and Chesterfield can work through that. And that is all I have for you tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
I think.
Laura, this is.
With the PPE equipment, we're in good shape, right?
I would not say good shape, but we are, we are stable. And we have, we've got a decent amount now. We, the state, we should get a shipment from the state order, which is stationed out of Chesterfield right now. This week, we should be on that list. And then I have some backup gear in place in case we run out to get us between times when we can get that. So, and if anybody, the sheriff knows all that, if anybody needs anything, I'm counting that in my numbers so that we get that and that we can hopefully not run out of PPE and put our people in a bad spot. As of right now, we are in a spot where we can keep moving and working. The other blessing we have, which is also a curse in a time like this, is we've only had two cases. That is the blessing. The curse is, is it puts us very, very low on the list of importance when it comes to things like PEE and so forth. We're competing against the, you know, Henrico and the city and so forth, because they've had so many cases.
Stuart, did you have something?
Yes, Laura, I was wondering, do we, does Station 1 answer calls so far as the St. Stevens area and King and Queen? Or? I was just.
Very rarely, and honestly, it is, it's dependent. We can go into King and Queen for mutual aid. We do not have personnel that we can do that all the time. We are definitely not going to do it if it is a non-priority patient. When it comes to mutual aid for fire, we will absolutely go into that area, depending on what's needed and what type of fire it is and how much water they need. So it's one of those things, can we? Yes, but it is very situational. I'm call the call, decided.
Okay. I was just wondering, because Walkin' and Fire Department, we support, and if we do run personnel to, you know, into King, Queen, St. Stevens area, I was just wondering why King and Queen didn't somewhat support us? But I guess if we don't go there often enough, that wouldn't be something that we needed to ask for.
Well, we actually, King and Queen do support us. We have, on our, on our house fire, they, they brought tankers. The biggest problem we have with King and Queen is up until recently, they only had one paid truck like we did, so they also don't have the staffing to come in. So when they have staffing and they're able to help us out, they do, they're great about getting us water and trucks when we've had fire. The EMS is a whole nother story, because we just don't have enough to go around.
Yeah, I was just, I was more or less speaking of the financial end. We, we supply funds, we supply funds to, to Warkington, and if we, if we're doing enough good work in the St. Stevens area, I was just wondering why King and Queen didn't step up to the plate and supplement us somewhat?
I, I'm going to, this is complete speculation, but I'm going to guess that that's not in their budget. But again, I do not, that is just a speculation, sir. I have no idea if that is true. That has not come from anyone, but it's a budgeting issue, just it is like us trying to figure out how we're going to make money for the county and keep growing our business and support volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
I did leave out one thing. Our fifth district supervisor has asked me about our emergency system. And, Mr. Moran, I know, it's, I have not ignored you, I promise. It has been crazy times. We do have, and this is the emergency alerting system that we do, and the last time that we did use that, and I believe everybody was on the emails when we had the missing female back in the fall, and he has asked that we start doing tests for that. I think that is a great idea, and that's something that we can do. We just need to make sure that we get it out to the public in the appropriate way, because if, if they don't know we're being tested and they don't know they're getting a test, then there's absolutely no way for us to know what they're getting on how our system works. So with that is something I definitely believe we can look forward to doing in the future. When our website is up and running, we can have it on there that on the third Friday of every month, a test call will go out at such and such a time, and I think that would be a good addition to the system. It's just not something that I can, I can do right at the second.
But can't you do just a simple text test to exercise the system now?
I absolutely can.
Can't be.
But it doesn't tell me who gets it and who doesn't.
Chief, I have a question. Bill Hodges, what was the test I got today dealing with the weather? And it came, it came from somewhere I said.
It probably was the weather one that automatically is set up through the system. Well, obviously, it was the weather one. It's set up through the system and comes from like, when I get the alerts from the National Weather System, it goes out automatically through that, and that is coming through that. But that's not one that we put out, that comes from National Weather Service.
Okay, I just wanted to, it was several of them today.
Anybody else?
Well, Mr. Chairman, she kind of answered the question that I was going to have already, which was about that emergency alert system. There, there was some chatter online today after the storms had passed through. Some people noticing that they, I guess, didn't get it, but if there was an automatic one that got pushed out, before I had a chance to jump in, people were already telling them just to make sure that they were signed up properly and hadn't got kicked out of the system. So if there was one pushed out, that's probably what happened. I didn't get one either, so I need to go back in to make sure that I'm signed up properly, but thanks for paying attention to that.
Right, and that, that is the biggest problem, and unfortunately, I only speak of the story I have been told for this, because it did not happen while I was here. Evidently, at some point, we switched systems, and when we switched systems, we lost a decent amount of people, which is why, if we are going to do a test page, I want to make that as available to the public that we are going to be doing that. Food Lion, all of our local places are always wonderful at allowing us to post things and say that it's coming. However, I don't believe in this atmosphere. That's going to be something that they're going to do, because everybody wants, we need to do it at a time when we have everybody out and about and can see it and know that these tests are going to start and we can get the word out.
This may be a redundant question, but why did we switch systems? I mean, the other systems seemed to work just fine. When we had it a couple of years back, I always got one when the tornadoes came through, I got one when the bad weather came through. We got one all the time, and then like Mr. Moran said, all of a sudden, we weren't getting any. Why, what was the reason? Who made the decision to change the systems?
I cannot speak to that. All that happened before I was here. I have no problem doing some research. I will even look into the old system that we had, see, and see why maybe we had a better response with that. But I, and you've got to give me a little time, gentlemen, on that one, only because of everything else going on.
Let's allow Mr. Wolf to engage this, take the pressure off you, and let Mr. Wolf take this on as an action.
Would that be all right?
This, this needs to be fixed. I'm sorry, it needs to be fixed.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with it at all. And that's, we are working, I am working the best I can to fix it with what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else? Thank you, Ms. Nunneling.
You are welcome. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
You too, be safe. I guess the next item we have is the Arts Alive request for appointment, but I guess like Mr. Hodges said, I guess we really don't have to do that, or it's just for information purposes?
They're asking that we do that, just like they did before, but it's not, the word is codified, is that right, Travis?
And. We've got some formal arrangements with some groups that, that we have, you know, members on, you know, thinking specifically of PDC, the Jail Board, you know, Workforce Investment Board, things like that. This isn't one of those that, that we're expected or required to have a member on. However, we've always had a member on there in the past, and they've asked that we consider putting someone on there, but, but I would think that they probably want somebody that would be willing to attend meetings and be, you know, provide useful input as well. So if, you know, if there's not a member that wants to do that on the board currently, then there's nothing saying that we have to send somebody.
Well. Dylan, with that, just let me say this, you know, I don't mind going, but the problem is, is two, two Mondays out of the month, we, they put theirs on Mondays, too. So then I have, I've had a lot of conflicts and family things that have, and I haven't been. And I'll tell anybody straight up, I haven't been able to attend.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I speak?
Yes.
When Ms. Klein reached out to us, this was going to have been on the March meeting that didn't occur, because she was asking for the board to designate someone. And I realize that this is not like the other committees, but since Mr. Hodges had been on it for four years, she asked that the board consider either a Board of Supervisor or a designee. So it could be a member of the staff as well. It's just that she had asked again, contacted me, that they were going to be making a final vote on the members the early part of May, and so that's why I put this on here. It does not have to be a Board of Supervisor, it can be a staff person, it can be a citizen that is active, whatever y'all want to do. I just had wanted to try to comply with her request to give her a name or tell her we weren't going to give her a name, one or the other.
Have you had any interest from anyone, or you really haven't had time to, to get any yet?
No, I basically put it out, since Mr. Hodges had been the designee last time, I put it out to the board first. But if the board isn't really interested but still wants representation, I'm sure that there'd probably be somebody on the staff or a citizen that would be interested in serving.
Does anyone on the board wish to do it with what Mr. Hodges was saying? It is Mondays, which is the same as our meeting. I don't know if anybody on our board wants to do it. Don't everybody speak at once?
Yeah, I'm trying to minimize meetings in my life at this point in time. So, no, I don't, I don't think, and especially if, if Bill doesn't have time to do it with everything conflicting down there, and, and we're both pretty close to it, I, I don't think it's something that I would be looking to take on right now. So I'm fine if what, you know, the action here is we want to go ahead and have Bobby just put the call out, you know, either put something online or find somebody on staff that is interested and wants to do it, and then we can go ahead and take this back up, you know, in two weeks, and, and see if we have an interested candidate.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
That awesome.
I agree with it, too. I think that, you know, the representatives, the board members from this entity county, plus, you know, the fact that it's on Mondays, that would be a pretty big ask if Travis and Bill can't do it. You know, it's, it's a pretty good trip, but yeah, I agree with if someone else is interested outside of the board.
Okay, we'll leave it in your court, Ms. Tesnary.
Okay, I'll take care of it and then bring you back the recommendation in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is Resolu-, is a 4C, Resolution 20-21 Budget Amendment, King William Social Services Office Appropriation of Local Match Funds for Additional Pass Through Funding for Fiscal Year 2020. Ms. Ann Mitchell, Director of Social Services.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Hey, hey, good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank the supervisors for your guidance through this disaster that we're in right now. I want you to know that our staff is working full-time. If they're not in the office, they're at home, and those who have laptops are able to work from home, but that's only three of us. So the others are taking turns being in the office. They are working some late evening hours. I've got a staff here now with me. They've actually worked on some Saturdays, because they want to get their hours in, and, and we have a lot of work to do. We're getting more SNAP applications now than ever. We had 58 applications in three weeks because of the new guidelines to allow citizens to apply who are unemployed, which is wonderful that we can help them. But it is taking the staff a lot of time to work those applications. So for the request here, give your little history. State Finance, Department of Social Services, State Finance has a formula for administrative funds that they use every year, and that formula does not always include enough money for funding everything that's needed in an administrative budget. Therefore, we have to ask for pass-through funds. The initial allocation has a local match of 15.5%. Pass-through funding has a match, local match of 65%. Therefore, we try to use all of the, and we do use all of the initial amount, and we start using pass-through funds in the fall to make sure that we don't have a large amount of pass-through at the end of the year. Well, this year, we've hired three new staff. Each of those staff have about two years of training. They've been in training a lot for the past year. Training includes travel, lodging, sometimes. We try to get training in Richmond, but sometimes they have to go out of town and stay, and food expenses. We also have had an increase in attorney fees. We have a new juvenile judge who is not that familiar with juvenile law. I'm not putting any blame on her. I'm just saying, it sometimes takes longer in court, so our attorney is sitting in court longer than normal than she has been in, in previous years. So it's just been an accumulation of administrative costs that now we've had to ask for additional pass-through funding from the state that will need that 65% local match. I would also just share with you that the Central Services Cost Allocation Plan that is developed every year by the auditors is a summary of the expenses, a percentage of what county government offices provide for our office, and the federal government then provides a lump sum of money in the spring, which usually comes at the end of April, to give back to the county for the expenses that the county has paid for our work, i.e. what the county administrator has done, the county attorney, facilities, maintenance, that type of thing. So last year, that cost allocation amount was $68,000. This year, I imagine that amount's going to be the same, pretty much the same. I emailed the state today to find out if they could give me the amount, but they did not have that tallied up as of yet. So the amount that we are requesting transfer from General Fund is $52,579, which would get us through the next three months. And then the cost allocation amount is actually more than that amount if you look at, you know, what's coming in that will help to pay the local match.
Was she finished?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, I had, Bill Hodges, I had a question. So your attorney is just on retainer, and it's depending on how much time? Okay.
Yes. And the reason is because the county attorney is not that familiar with child and family law. Our previous one was not, and so we already had a contract with Hefty and Wiley and Gore, and they have done a great job for us.
No, I, I do understand that. I, I was just figuring how it to pay was.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
This is Stuart.
Yes.
The allocation back from the state, the extra funds, is that rolled over to, to your budget for the following year?
No.
If it is over?
No, it's, no, that, that goes into the general fund. That's $68,000. Yes, sir, it goes into the general fund.
Okay. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I am fine. Thank you.
Good, good to hear that.
Ms. Tesnary, do you have anything to add to that for us, or is it all pretty self-explanatory on the resolution?
It is totally self-explanatory. One of the fiscal specialists worked through this with Ann Mitchell's financial person, and so we agree with the recommendation.
Anybody else have any discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we do this, you know, pretty much every year. It's just moving one thing to another and then waiting for the reimbursements to come in. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval of Resolution 2021.
Second. Yeah, motion made and properly seconded. Is there any other discussion? Ed, you look like you wanted to say something?
No, I was just, I'm always curious about the previous year, what the amount was, if anybody can recall. Otherwise, no, it's okay, I understand.
Natasha or Bobby, do you happen to recall what it was last year? I don't, I don't recall either.
Quite all right.
Yeah, I think it was about 40 last year.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, seeing no other discussion, Ms. Lawrence, could you call roll?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi. Resolution passes.
Thank you so much, and I hope everybody stays well.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, but I always keep notes. Was that a four to one?
I, I didn't hear any against the five, you have five, yeah.
I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is for DED update on Town of West Point Pavilion, Ms. Tesnary?
Yes, sir. I reached out to Mr. Edwards and got some information that Mr. Moran was interested in. The council approved the contract with Norman Company, Inc. at the March 19th meeting, and they signed the contract on March 27th. The total contract for the construction is $611,700. What occurred was that in December, of course, the board approved this through Resolution 1972, and at that point, it moved into the operational realm where Mr. Edwards and I agreed that we, as the county, would reimburse once a contract was signed and they were beginning to receive invoices. At the same time, we put it in as a purchase order in our financial system and have encumbered the funds, because it will go across fiscal years. And it is up to 250,000. Uh, and it is up to two hundred and fifty thousand and the funds are retained in the capital fund.
Ed, do you have any other questions or anybody else or?
Yeah, uh, this is Stuart. I'm uh, you know, I was in agreement with Ed uh on this issue all along. We had not been seated yet, uh, you know, when when y'all uh did the vote, but uh it's just with everything that's going on now, uh, with everybody in the county making sacrifices. It's just, to me, it was it was overkill to continue to to pursue that, but that's my opinion only.
Well, it's like Ms. Tesnary says, it is an agreement that the county board, previous board made, and we can't renege on it. Doesn't matter what's going on right now unless something happened and all of our funds disappear, but I mean, I'm I'm thinking we'd be worse off to pull back, but I don't know, our lawyer's not here today, so I mean, I don't know.
It's disappointing.
I'm not insinuating that. I'm just insinuating that we're all making sacrifices and and uh I would have appreciated if they could have put it on the back burner for a period of time. Uh, not that we would pull the funds, but at least step back and take a breath.
Right.
It's probably, if I can real quick, Stephen, um, to understand the source of the funds. Because this is, you know, capital, so it's it's not operational money. So, you know, we're not in in spending this, we're not laying anybody off or furloughing anybody, and and it's it's money that was set aside for capital projects from the very start. So we haven't moved any money around to make this happen. It's all coming out of one source that was dedicated to this from the beginning. And whether we pulled this back or not would have no effect on our operations going forward anyways, because again, it is it was money that was already set aside for capital purposes.
Exactly, but uh it's it is also funds that that could have been used for other capital projects. My opinion. I could be wrong.
It's very shocking that even as of March twenty-seventh, that the Town of West Point went ahead and entered into this contract. Uh, given what they, we knew back even on the twenty-seventh, it's just.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, Ms. Tesnary.
Uh, I do understand, you know, the concern, but also remember that the county is contributing up to two hundred and fifty thousand. The balance is being contributed by the town. So even in March, when they were seeing what was going on, they still felt that this was a good enough venture to move forward with, since they were committing more funds than the county was. So, I mean, it's a commingled. They were under the same duress as the county.
But again, it's not, it's not logical given what we're seeing. It's just this is not a necessary construction project. This is nice to have. If they wanted something for the run as of whatever the date is, go rent a tent. But to commit six hundred and eleven thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to a pavilion, it's it's, I don't know how it's justified. I really don't.
That's something I guess they'll have to go with their town council too, because their town council is who's footing the rest of the bill, I would guess. I don't know, but Bill, if you know anything about what's going on there, but I mean, like I said, I don't, I'm not making an excuse, but like I said, that if they felt they're still, I I sort of agree with Ed and Stuart, I mean, but I'm not gonna go back and renege on something that we've done. I do wish maybe that they had held back a little, but we can't we can't ask people to hold back for any kind of reason, I guess. I don't know.
No, the only thing I'll say is there's plenty of projects that have occurred up in the North District that that I didn't agree with, but I wasn't on the board, so I don't get a vote. I don't get a redo.
That is, you're missing the point. This is timing. This is all based on timing, not who got what project when. This is bad timing.
Okay, but this, when they signed the contract, they were already in discussions and had the plans underway before that. But I know you don't agree with it. You didn't agree with it in the EDA and they voted, you were voted down there.
That makes it all right. I understand.
Yeah, in a perfect world, this is Stuart again. I I would have liked to have thought that that vote would have been been tabled and I think it was Dec- December the sixteenth. That was one of the last orders of business. Uh, the Sweet Sue's solo was tabled for the new board. You know, we could have uh, we could have all had a little bit of input at the time, but no, Stephen's right. You know, it's it's water under the bridge at this point in time. But it was certainly within their power to to think about the uh the timing of that project the way it is now. Because at the end of the day, it's still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money from all over the county. And a and a great deal of those people will never sit in that pavilion.
Yeah. That's to anybody else?
I, you know, as far as the town's choices in moving forward, you know, we made our commitment, um, you know, to what we were gonna fund and up to a certain amount. And and that's what we're doing. You know, we're not driving the bus on the on the project from there, so um, you know, agree, disagree with what the town's moving forward with. Uh, we're still within the realm or within the confines of what um, you know, we had agreed to do with them in December of last year. And 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 really, again, from the source of where this funding's coming from, because this came out of that, well, Bobby, everybody's favorite phrase, correct me if I'm wrong, but this came out of that set aside for economic development.
That is correct.
Okay, so you know, these were funds that we had set aside for economic development projects. This is really one of the first ones that we had identified that we wanted to participate in. And uh, and and that's what we're we're going forward with. You know, that pot of, that pot of money in in these types of projects, though they might seem small and and inconsequential at the time, might be how we help people get back on their feet when this is all over, you know, having a place for small uh restaurants and food trucks to try to start up so people can make a living and have a place to go, you know? Um, there there's all kinds of arguments that can be made one way or another. Um, you know, the three of us that are that are on the board, that were on the board in December, uh, you know, made that decision together and we'll start, we're still, we are still here and I wouldn't make a different decision now. So as far as the timing of the project and everything, that's in the town's hands. You know, what we committed to, we still committed to, and we haven't changed that commitment, nor do I think we should. But thank you for the update, Bobby.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess I'll move along to item four E, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget discussion. Miss, how do you pronounce it now, Jornalien? I think you're, you need to unmute yourself.
I got it. Okay. Jornalien.
Jornalien.
Norwegian. Yeah, it's a Norwegian name. Good ev- uh, good evening to everyone. Um, this evening, hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. This evening, we just wanted to touch base briefly on a few items. Um, the first item to speak about is the health coverage. Um, I did want to let you know, beginning in two thousand twenty fiscal year, the finance department eliminated use of benefits broker that saved the county sixteen thousand dollars annually. Human re- human resources now heads up negotiations and support for health insurance, flex spending, short and long-term disability. The county currently offers health insurance plan to its employees as a benefit through the local choice health benefits program offered through the Commonwealth of Virginia. We've received the rates for the local choice for two thousand twenty, I mean, twenty twenty-one, which reflects a four point eight increase, percent increase. The county will continue to offer the key advantage two fifty and five hundred plans. Both employee and employer would proportionally share the increase based on percentages approved in fiscal year twenty nineteen. King William County will need approximately one point three million between employer and employee premiums for twenty twenty-one. King William County will contribute one million, two, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three as employees' contribution of health insurance, while the employees of the county will contribute the remaining two hundred and forty-one thousand, three forty-one. The overall contribution is employees com- employer's contribution is eighty-one percent, employee contribution is nineteen percent. The second item to speak on is the capital plan. The county administrator's recommended budget addresses only the capital items that cannot be moved to future fiscal years. Total recommendations for capital improvement plans for twenty twenty-one is four point nine million dollars. The recommended funding sources are as follows. General fund of two hundred and ten thousand, which will, which would include thirty K for emergency services, fifty thousand for capital fund for, to build the capital fund for the purchase of a new fire engine, a hundred and thirty thousand to replace outdated mobile computers used for transmitting dispatch information to patrol units in the field. The proper's cash funding uh will be thirty thousand to address one-time needs for the renovation of three hundred of them, the three sixty property. The capital fund, we intend to roll forward the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Of that, twenty-five thousand for the county administration servers, software and computer equipment, ten thousand for general repairs to the McAllister Building, ten thousand for general repairs to the courthouse. State assistance funding in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, reimbursements for renovation to three sixty property to move social services offices. And finally, the capital debt financing to support the Motorola Tower project for four point five million dollars. The third and last item is tax levies proposed for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. There's no change in the tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The county administrator recommends maintaining the current tax rates for the twenty twenty calendar year. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to the budget session this coming Friday to discuss further the twenty twenty-one budget.
Do you anybody have any discussion or questions from Ms. Jornal?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes, Ed.
Yes, ma'am, on the servers and replacements, maybe more of a Travis and Travis Wolf, but is uh the servers and software, is that for obsolescence or end of life? Or I'm hoping that it's to take advantage of your fiber, uh, fiber broadband now that you have. I know you have some antiquated stuff.
Travis, did you want to answer that, or do you want me to go ahead and take it?
Either way.
The lifespan of our computer, uh, we we intend to replace a lot of our um tower computers with laptops for the um employees. We also have a an expense, all of, most of the staff are on Windows seven still. Um, as everyone knows, it needs, we need to go ahead and make that change to Windows ten, which is roughly around a little over two hundred dollars a a license to have that on each computer.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Travis Wolf, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think um, just to to on to replacing the towers with laptops. Not that hopefully we're gonna have another situation that came up this way, but we do have several employees that could potentially be working from home uh that do not have capability to do so right now. Um, that is causing some slowdown. Uh, I think Ann spoke to it earlier, that she's having people work nights and on the weekends to still make their hours. So any replacement of uh computers going forward will be laptops. Um, that also will assist with people that need to work from home. If they have a sick child or sick themselves, they can still uh remote in. Um, Windows ten is uh an obvious um upgrade that needs to be done. And then also, moving forward with taking over three sixty, we will need to be able to um make those locations connected to, back here to the main server.
Well, Ms. Tesnary, do we have any sort of, call it emergency funding that you could go to procure? Maybe half a dozen laptops, not, nothing fancy, but some Chromebooks or something so employees can do minimal work?
At this time, no. I mean, we are two months away from the end of the fiscal year. And I do, as the county administrator, have a contingency fund that's set aside each year, but we tend to go through that. At this point, I think that we have purchased, Travis, correct me, uh, one or two laptops. Um, but no, uh-uh, we do not have those funds right now. I pretty much um asked everybody to stop spending because I do think we're gonna have a deficit uh that we're gonna need to cover at the end of this year.
Uh, if I could, uh, that is correct. We ordered um two laptops to get in uh on March twenty-fourth, I believe. And the estimated time of delivery is May the eleventh, due to everyone in the world ordering laptops and doing work from home.
Thank you. Anybody else on questions on that?
Uh, none for this presentation tonight, Mr. Chairman, no, sir.
Looks like the next item we have is the board review of the proposed April seventeenth work session meeting agenda that we had in our packet coming up this Friday. Did everyone look at that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Tesnary.
The agenda um is very similar to the one that you had last year, though of course, last year we were all in uh the same room. Uh, I don't anticipate that we will probably be able to stay to this schedule, but it at least provides some structure. I know that um, I will know tomorrow if, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday night, if uh someone from Economic Development is planning to do a very brief presentation. I know that Dr. White had expressed an interest in doing a brief presentation in his section, just as he did last year. Uh, but going through the departments, I did not plan on having staff um available unless you so choose, though they do know that they need to be available if y'all have a question that needs to be answered for you to make a decision. So as you'll note, the agenda goes through three forty-five. I think that it may be just a little bit challenging to stick with this agenda, but at least it gives us some kind of structure and something for the uh employees to be able to try to track.
Bobby, the, these department heads have already gotten this layout.
No, sir, they have not.
Should they not, since they need to be available, say, between ten and ten forty-five, or eleven to ten forty-five and eleven thirty?
Well, I wanted to run it past you guys first. Um, they already know that on Friday that they need to be available. And so they are aware of that. Um, it's just, you know, as to what time.
Last year, we went through it so fast that really the times didn't matter anyway, because we we got through a bunch of sections faster than we did. And and the people that, I think the sheriff was pushed way up and didn't know he was supposed to come in earlier, but uh you, Bobby, you thinking it's gonna take a little longer this time rather than shorter or?
No, I think it it will probably be shorter than what this agenda shows. But what I wanted to try to do is at least break it down by the sections, and then what we'll do is we'll just stay in contact with each of the department heads. So if we move along faster in certain areas, they'll know to be available. Um, and they can, you know, come over here, they can come from their office and speak to any questions that you have, but I think that the only true presentation is probably gonna be provided by Dr. White. Everything else will just be answering your questions.
All right. Anybody else have any issues with this prepared agenda?
I have a question. Are we allowed or not allowed to physically attend?
Bobby?
With appropriate precautions, of course.
I think that would be with the ten limit, right?
If y'all would like to have a physical presence here, then we could make sure that we separated everybody out and had no more than ten people in the room. But I would prefer if y'all are going to do that, all of y'all participate instead of just a few.
I would agree with that. And Ed, it would be easier if we're there, but I mean, I think.
I agree. I just uh, I looked up Zoom Hogs about one gig per hour of audio and video. We could all, if we're gonna do any sharing of presentations and things, you have to consider that as well. I don't have, I don't have the glory of broadband internet up here.
So, Mr. Moran, are you planning on doing a presentation?
No.
Okay.
If one is presented, I would like to be able to see it.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry, I just. Oh, okay, well, I'm sorry, I just realized that there wasn't going to be any presentations. But yes, if y'all would like to attend here, that would be fine.
Something happened.
Well, I think.
Do we need a motion or something to decide, just make a, or go through every member and see how many want attendance or Zoom?
Can I chime in?
Sound is gone.
Yeah, Travis.
Oh, my.
Would it be, you know, I know we've got an agenda that carries us through, you know, three, was it 3:45 or so? Should there be some thought maybe given to this, if we can start at nine, or if we can even start at eight and try to get it done by noon? To just limit time that people are having to spend in that environment? You know, I truly think we have a need to be there all day. You know, if maybe we can suss out some of the important questions that any members might have between now and the morning beginning. But, you know, I don't see the need to go through what we used to go through, which was, you know, sitting there all day and making each department head give us a presentation. I just don't see that being a good use of anybody's time, especially in light of the circumstances, you know, and especially in light of the way that we've changed this budget, you know, with so many, you know, requests being, you know, removed and pushed off until we have a clearer picture of what the years ahead bring us. So what, what are the thoughts of maybe that of compressing this as much as possible? So that we don't have to spend, you know, all day in an environment where we probably, in all honesty, should not be. However, I do agree that it would be beneficial if we were all there to hear this information together, rather than some on Zoom and some, you know, at courthouse. I'll leave, I'll ask for your thoughts on that, Bobby.
We could most definitely compress it to an eight to noon. And there again, I was not planning on having any of the department heads do any kind of presentations. I just really wasn't, I mean, we've got so many other things that we're dealing with right now. And some of our department heads are working from home and are not able to come into the office. So compressing the timeline down, making sure that everybody's available in case that there are questions that arise. Be glad to do that, I'll, I'll reach out to Dr. White and to Jay Brown. And I would say Dr. White would probably do something through a Zoom. Jay, though I don't know, but yes, I'll be glad to compress it. Eight to noon, everybody show up here, we'll parse you all out and we'll make sure that we don't have more than 10 people in a room.
Yeah, and then I'm thinking, you know, if we tried to coordinate a lunch or anything like that, that's just more travel, that's just contact that we can be avoiding. So yeah, if we can get everybody out of here by, by that time, I think that we're probably, we're getting the work done that we need to get done. We're also minimizing everybody's risk and exposure. So if the rest of the board is okay with that, I would, I would think that would be the direction to go.
I hate to bring this up, we're going to be exposed, we're going to be exposed, it doesn't matter from eight to 12, or eight to five, or whatever, we're exposed, we're all going to be exposed in an instant. So I mean, I'm just throwing that out there too, we're not supposed to be meeting, but whatever.
Well, I know, but that's why I'm thinking the drag of the day and bringing in more people or encouraging some type of presentation, that just, that just increases that, which we're supposed to be mitigating. You know, I agree that probably ideally we don't go there. However, it really, for the benefit of the process and making sure that we're all getting the same information and, and on the same page. I think it's, it's been also ideal that we are all there. So if we can make it as safe as possible for us to be there for a limited amount of time, I think that's the best thing to do to make sure the processes work.
If I may, I don't know that any of y'all guys know other than Ed, but I do have a compromised immune system. And I'm really wary of doing anything other than what I normally do, which is jog every day. Have gone absolutely nowhere. And I do, I do feel like, you know, we need to have this face-to-face meeting. You know, I will be there, but believe me, I will keep my distance. You know, it is a, it is, it will always be a risk with this, with this virus, but to me, it's, it's a greater risk.
Well, we will make sure that we sanitize the room heavily beforehand and have whatever we do have available in case you want to wipe things down as you're here. But we will make sure that everybody is segregated a great distance and Stuart will put you as far away as we possibly can.
We have gloves and masks and sanitizer, is it a bring your own BYO?
I will ask Chief Nunley to provide whatever she has, and we do have the sanitizer up here.
You know what, why, let's, let's, let's take one more step back. I mean, is it, is it wise to press on with this in any fashion? Or should we just maybe rethink this and do it as, you know, either this type of meeting in the evening? Or move it to the following, to the following Monday, add a meeting there and do it this way. If we're, you know, basically what the crux of it is, is a presentation from the schools and then, you know, some, some Q and A. Do, do we need it? Do, do we really need to have this type of meeting and I'll be there just period? Or do we think we can, we can hash this out in this manner?
Travis, Stuart and I are new, now I've been, I think the last two to three Fridays representing the EDA, but I do have, I do have questions that are going to be promulgated by having discussions. Can I go back and go through the budget and jot them all down in a, in an email? Sure, but, and again, I appreciate your question about is this worth the risk? I don't know that anybody can really answer that one, but.
Can y'all hear me? I'm back by phone only.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Ed, you know, you can always bring up any question dealing with any line item, anything on the budget.
But if it's going to be, it's not glossed over, but it's, if it's not going to be, the department heads are not available, that I'm going to have to have someone call them to ask the question. I just want to be prepared.
And that's the way we've always, Ed, they, and they respond quickly, it's not, we will skip on to the next item until they arrive.
Or dial in, as the case may be.
I'm just, I'm thinking, because really, you know, I'm reeling right now, I don't know what the right thing to do in this situation is. And so, you know, I, I think at a minimum, the goal should be to get in and get out as quickly as we can. You know, absent that, we probably need to question whether or not we absolutely need to have it. I, I do agree completely with Ed, I think in, in a, in an absolute, you know, if this isn't happening, there's no question in whether or not we have to have this meeting. It's absolutely vital that we have collaborative discussion, face-to-face is always best. So again, I'm fine having it as long as we're taking the proper precautions and we get in and get out as fast as we can and just try to minimize, you know, cross-contact and exposure.
How about a compromise, Travis, and we do a Zoom this Friday? And if there are serious issues or concerns, we look at another short session to hit those sticky points and get everybody happy, it's sort of a compromise.
Sure, and again, I'm not pushing for one or the other, I'm just, I'm just thinking, and, and that, it's kind of getting out of control. I'm fine with that, we've certainly had several budget sessions before, but we've had particularly difficult budgets. Mr. Greenwood and I could probably remember a time when we've met probably close to a dozen times, you know, between a budget presentation and adoption to really get a final budget worked out. And I'm certainly not suggesting that that's what we need to do. I think that's a fair compromise. Again, I, I just, I don't want anybody to be put in a necessarily risky position. I don't want to feel like we're dragging anybody into this that doesn't need to be there. I don't want to put the face on it that we're putting anybody at risk that doesn't need to be put at risk. I certainly don't want to borrow PPE from the fire department. Help it. You know, we'll all, we'll sew whatever we got to sew and we can get some of that stuff. But definitely that needs to be held for, for our first responders. So it's just things like that, you know, and that's really what, when she said that we'll borrow some from the fire department, I'm like, man, shouldn't we really be doing that? So I don't know, anybody else chime in with what they're thinking to let me know if I'm out of here?
I agree, we, I've always wondered that we should have gotten together too, but it's just, I mean, I think we could bring our own masks and gloves if we wanted to and maybe just get it over real quick. But it is going to be a lot easier if we are together, but even though we can only be 10, so nobody else from the public can come in unless they stand out in the lobby or.
Well, remember that the building is closed to the public, so they couldn't attend anyway.
Right, that's true. And then I was wondering, it opened until 8:30, so should we wait till the people are there for work, or are we going to push it half an hour early?
Well, I think the eight o'clock would be fine. One thing, Mr. Moran and Mr. Garber, and the other three can attest to this, is that a lot of the times when the board is asking questions about departmental information, either I or Natasha know the answer. And so I don't think that we really have to go to the department heads that often because we do know the answers. Now, if we don't, we definitely get them involved. But if y'all would like to meet here personally, eight to noon on Friday, I think that would be great. I do want everybody to have their, their questions answered, but at the same time, we've been working on this since November. Staff is ready for this to get, get put to bed and us move on to other things. So I am game for either y'all bringing your own PPE, we'll designate the boardroom and set it up appropriately, or if you want to do a Zoom, that's fine as well.
Do we want to do a nod or a yes, no by each person or what?
Stephen, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Why don't we do the Zoom like Ed is suggesting, and if we need another meeting, we do the other meeting?
Okay, so then the next question, what do you want to do that? Do you want to do that again at the same time at eight o'clock or nine o'clock, or do you want to do it that evening?
That part doesn't bother me, either one, I just need to know, that's all. And as far as I'm concerned, I have my own PPE stuff, so. And I might be able to help maybe one or two out if they need it.
The only other problem I want to bring up legally, we're advertised it for nine o'clock, so I don't know if we can push the time up to eight o'clock. But I mean, that's another issue we have to worry with with some people.
You can, I mean, as far as, we need to clear this with the county attorney, but I think what you can probably do is cancel that meeting and then put out a call for another meeting to take place at another time that day. It would just have to meet that three-day requirement, which we would still be under if we make this decision tonight.
I would rather get it over with early because we don't want to push it into later, because then the department heads won't be there later, they'll be there during the day, they won't be there at nighttime.
I, I think they would be there, but I, I agree with you, they'd probably rather not be in that sense. It concerned me when Bobby said something earlier that the outside participation couldn't occur because of the numbers and the building is closed. Wouldn't that make that an illegal meeting and wouldn't Zoom be better where they can call in?
Well, okay, Bill, you have to remember, this is not going to have any public comment on the work session. They can listen in, so if y'all decide to come up here, what we'll do is we'll still put this on Zoom so that people can view it as y'all discuss things. Or we can just do it as we're doing right now. But yes, I would much prefer that it be done in the daytime when people are available to answer questions.
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm good with whatever folks want to do, I really am, I'll do the Zoom or I'll show up there that morning, either one, we just need to know tonight.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement really with anything that anybody said. I just wanted to make y'all aware that, you know, I do have a compromised immune system and I'm pretty much uncomfortable going pretty much anywhere at this point in time. But it is important, and you know, if y'all decide that that's, you know, that that's avenue to do it live, then you know, that's what we'll do.
Why don't, why don't we think about this real quick too? Because if we're going to do a Zoom meeting with the possibility of doing another meeting afterwards, if we had questions that needed clarification from department heads, you know, I don't know why we need to do it necessarily during the day on Friday. You know, we could have that session with Natasha and with Bobby. And then if we had stuff that we, you know, they couldn't clarify or needed answers on, then we could then have that other meeting and have them available.
I'm, I'm good with, you know, with whatever decision y'all make, I mean, you know, it's, it's important either way. Or if y'all, if y'all want to do it that way, I'm fine with that, or, or, you know, whatever y'all decide.
All right, guys, and ladies, why don't we go ahead with the same Zoom times and everything we had already advertised? And if we need to do another meeting, we do another meeting.
I mean. Ed, are you okay with that? I, I was wondering if Ed was okay with that?
I'm good.
You're good? When did that happen?
I'm not going to get what I want, so. No, this is, this is not the time, I'm new, I've got a lot of questions. I just want patience to be able to ask them and get a suitable answer on Friday.
Do we all have to be at the meeting in person? Couldn't Stuart be in on Zoom and the rest of us in the boardroom?
Well, I think the, the point of the discussion was that however we're going to digest this information, it's probably best if we're all doing it in the same manner. Just for consistency.
Yeah, but Zoom is hard to do that, and I agree with Ed, this is very difficult to use. And plus, it takes up a lot of internet, I don't know if I'm going to be able to handle it all day either. What was that, Olivia?
I said I have a lot of things for you to sign.
Well, do we want to take a vote, or do we just, what, the last consensus is what, the same, the full day Zoom or what?
How about a compromise? How about keeping the same agenda, starts at nine, knowing that we're going to finish early? Four individuals can show up and Mr. Garber can call in on Zoom, that way it's going to be broadcast. How's that?
No, if y'all are going to do it live, I'm going to be there too.
I have a Kevlar suit you can wear.
Probably an improvement, right?
Hi, gentlemen, I'm, since we, it's difficult to come up with anything, I can't even see anybody right now. I make a motion that we go with the Zoom meeting at the regular scheduled time. I mean, I'm sorry, with the in-person meeting at the same different time.
That's a little different.
I thought, I thought that's what everybody wanted to do was to meet there and Garber said he's coming if we're there.
I like that idea, and let's shrink it up, I don't want to be there all day.
Absolutely.
Okay, do I have a second, or do we, let's go around the room, have a motion. Bill, you said you wanted to do it, Stuart, it's all right with you?
You know, what are we all going to do, I mean?
I know we had lunch, it's an in-person, starts at nine on Friday, okay with you, Travis?
I would make, yeah, the only thing I was worried about was just keeping people safe. So as long as everybody feels like they can, they can do it and be protected, then I'm fine. You know, I'll be sure to have, you know, bring my gear and we'll be ready.
Okay.
Did you just roll call?
I don't think we needed, it was just a motion, yeah.
I think he just did a vote, but he didn't use Olivia. I think you just did a vote, but you didn't use Olivia.
I don't think we need a vote on that. It was just sort of a, it was supposed to be a nod, but since I can't see everybody. But we can take a vote if we want to.
I was going to say, you had a motion in a second, I think.
We're good.
Yeah, you had a motion in a second, and I, oh, everybody is what I heard.
Okay, just put that, Olivia. Hi, everybody.
Okay.
All right, I've derailed this meeting enough. I'm muting.
And I've lost my agenda. That's it. I guess, next thing we have, Board of Supervisors comments, which is just not really comments. It's a discussion on things you want to bring up, for maybe things in the future, ideas we want to look into for things in the future. Does anybody have any? I know Ed had a few things, or?
Yeah, I would like to ask that we get routine updates on the Sweet Sue project from the planning department.
Yes, sir, but there are no updates. Nothing is going on yet.
Yeah, I think they might be on hold because of all this. It's just, you know.
Not a lot of surveying down there, but. Okay.
Yeah, I see them. I see them every day when I'm jogging.
While we on that subject, if I may, when do the rollback taxes, when are they paid? After the final approval, or are they going to be paid in the next tax cycle since the board has approved it? Or is it once they obtain all of their permits?
It'll be once they obtain all their permits, and then the property truly comes out.
Anybody have anything else they want to bring up for a future meeting, or anything to discuss, or bring up, talk about?
Just one thing, and really, it's a question for you, Bobby. Did you entertain anything with the Historical Society? I know they wanted twenty-five grand. I know that's impossible. Is there any other funding that may be done or given to them? They're trying to do a seventy-five thousand dollar match to get seventy-five thousand. I didn't know where you had gone with that.
I have not gone anywhere with it. That was one of the reasons, or just one of the reasons that I sent out that last memo to each of you, to let you know how tight our budget is. Also, to provide you areas where you truly can have discussions, so that if you have something else that you would like to fund, then these are the areas you would have to look at reducing.
Okay, they were, they were down to even a thousand if they could get a thousand as they go around soliciting money, trying to make this match, but we can only do what we can do.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing no one, I guess we go into closed session, which I guess we'll have to do a whole new, new Zoom meeting?
We'll have to take the vote in this one.
Do we have to do like an S R one again, go out?
Well, the S R one is when we come back in. So somebody should have the 2.24711 section, I imagine.
Didn't come out, so I don't have it.
In accordance with section 2.2-3711, a move that the Board of Supervisors can meet in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the interview of a prospective candidate for employment, I think, is the right one?
Bobby said that's not. Is that right?
It's not the right one.
It's 1A.
You want to edit it, Ed?
1A.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, Olivia, is, is that right? It's still not right?
Olivia, you mean that 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia? I was using phonetics, like alpha, sorry.
All right, have the proper motion now, Olivia.
Okay, have a motion made and properly seconded. Ms. Lawrence, you go all.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. We're now close, we're going into closed session. I don't have my gavel here either. Oh, well. And now what do we have to do, Mr. Travis?
Okay, so. Leave this meeting, and there's another login that was sent to you earlier today. Log in on that one.
That is correct. I'm going to leave this meeting now to go to that meeting to let everyone in.
So we're effectively like walking away from the dice now.
Okay.